Hello, attention please, sorry. Thank you. This is an attempt today to support this commeter. And I appreciate all your...
Oh, move.
The project may currently have got another council business. I'll move that. Second of councillor Hawkins. All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry.
Is there a subsection of apology? It's an apology on council business as opposed to genuinely an apology?
Well, it's noted in the minutes on council business.
I know it is, I just wondered if something seemed to worry us about council business.
Obviously, let us just show... Confirmation of agenda, help. Moving. Confirmation of agenda, Mike. Second of myself. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry. Decoration of interest, just a note here. I just note that on item nine, we're going to retire the token financial community board for seeing Kerry Warner, so we're going to go item nine. Round the table. Naming the number four, naming the new road, subdivision Moscow. Welcome Bruce.
Pick it and move.
Okay, you want to sit down or are you going to stay for three items at least? All right. Bruce, any comments make? Move the seconded. You want to say? Any discussion? All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry. And that was through? No, no, I think Adrian O'Neil is desperately wanting to be the first one.
I understood that councillor Van was moved to three.
I'm not sure that we're allowed to do it that way. Can you just move the second?
Yes.
Okay, can you not do the third ones? I think Andrew desperately wants to do the third.
I'll second.
Okay, move the second one. Naming of new road, putting fields, subdivision Moscow. Any, Bruce, do you want to say anything? Just give you all in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry. Number six, naming new private wave, hall road, toysway. Andrew, would you like to talk to this?
Not particularly. I'm sure common sense will prevail.
I wouldn't think they'd stop having such clear paperwork. Second, move.
Move seconded. Sorry, Richard. Yes, thank you.
I just want to say that if I had a choice between living in Cairns Lane and living in Cairns Ross Lane, I know which one I would prefer to live in. I should be grateful that the name is Bruce. I really think that this...
Oh, wait a minute. It's not a comment against staff, is it, please?
I think this highlights for me the idiocy of this situation, that we will probably approve this name because it meets the criteria. It is, in my view, significantly less elegant than that which the owner of the land actually wanted and which the community board actually wanted. And in the event that this recommendation were to be voted down, I would be moving that we approved the originally suggested name of Cairns Ross Lane.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll have to respond to that. Look, if councillor Thompson had been at the meeting, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Sorry. Well, it's just an ask.
Any other discussion? I'll put the motion, all in favour, please say aye.
Sorry. Councillor Thompson, for chair, who would move that resolution here?
All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry. Thank you. Proposed road stopping. Thank you, Bruce. Your opinions? Proposed road stopping, eighty-two cliffs road. We have a problem here. And we need two items. Have we got side or anything else? This is unusually quick, guys, thank you.
We can't go over Michael Harrison's...
No, he's not here either. So, Jean, I think you're going to straight to the table immediately. We're doing eighty-two cliffs road, road stopping. Item seven. Take your time while you're waiting for John to join you.
I think you just get a crack into it really.
Crack into it, no, no comments. Happy to move, thank you, darling. Second of councillor board. Any discussion? Any questions? No discussion? All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry. Are you happy to do turn number eight? Simply a seawall update. Any comments you would like to make?
At the state, I think, three steps to manage in terms of the direction that was the eastern thing to take. I will add some comments, but in terms of the work that's been carried out through the more recent open reports and some reflection on reports that were available to us as well, we believe that the asset management plan has set up a prudent approach to manage the current seawall for the meeting term.
Can I just ask, just for clarity really, the asset management plan, our work has got ADCC logo on it, it has been pinned by staff and it's just like turning it...
That is a staff...
Okay. Because at the end of the day, we can't... It's actually a lockdown, it takes another information. I think the future will be helped to have office that they want. Andrew, questions?
Next member of the chair. My question, Jean, on eight point four under the asset management plan and your spreadsheet for the financials. And I'm just trying to understand the merit of having your reactive maintenance for the first four years and then the next six, there isn't anything, why wouldn't it be spread over the 10-year period?
My understanding that that is for reactive maintenance, which is around provision of the sheet piling for the toe. So that allocation there would essentially have sheet piled, the foxing and...
So in other words, after that four year, up until eighteen nineteen, that effectively finishes the reactive maintenance?
Yes, the toe would be, it's essentially extended down.
And the reactive maintenance is totally associated with the previous event?
No, the reactive maintenance could be related to future events where the toe would be exposed.
Yeah, I think that's my point really, because who knows what can happen in the future. My concern is that we haven't made a financial allocation for that six-year period from eighteen nineteen through to whatever.
I'm saying is, some of this is stockpiling material? Some of this is stockpiling material?
Yes, so that would be for the purchase of the sheet piling and stockpiling that to when it's required. And when the sand drops, to a certain level that an intervention is required, it will be installed and that provision on that is sufficient for the wall.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Thank you.
I know that you haven't been with us for many years, certainly not as many years as when I started. Are you aware that there were a lot of anecdotal complaints from contractors' employees, which I passed on to staff and also shared with council back in the period from 2004, 2007, where the contractors apparently were required to put in a concrete foundation in the toe and that they were to cut that foundation into rock and that they were then to put the panels into that concrete slot, that concrete slot in the rock. It gets a bit biblical about building on rock rather than on sand. I passed on a lot of those complaints to, I think it was Mr Graham Hall that was in charge of that area at the time, and nothing was done. We now have a situation where we have photographs showing that there was in fact no foundation at all, that the panels were simply dropped into the sand and kind of hope for the best type basis. What I'm wondering is that, given that, at least complaints from contractors that I spoke with about what wasn't done on the toe, and given that we are now having to retrospectively fit a toe effectively with sheet piling, which is not that ideal either, have we still, after this amount of time, got any possibility of recourse with whoever was responsible for not putting a foundation under that wall?
Councillor Lee, thank you. I'm going to direct that question to Tony, if that's all right. I think it's more appropriate.
Excuse me, Chair. I was here, I've been here for a long time now, but I wasn't involved in project at initial stages, but some of the stuff that we've been able to work out on the review, both the review of the wall itself and as a result of this work that's been done around the damage of the sheet piling, the bedrock disappears to quite a depth below parts of the wall. And even if we've done the sheet piling, we haven't had bedrock at all. So the bedrock appears to drop, the wall is sitting on bedrock in some places and then the bedrock drops away. We don't know where the bedrock is. That's one issue. I don't know what was decided at the time. The wall isn't, as I understand it, is suspended, is engineeringally designed to suspend off the veins that are in there. It's not sitting on the stand, on the sand, and the evidence is that when the panels were undermined, the panels themselves are fine, so they were held in place, interior of the wall wasn't compromised. What appears to have happened in this particular case is that the sand has been eroded away, it's got quite low and has exposed the bottom. Whether that was part of the original design in terms of the depth of the panel, difficult to say. But certainly the sheet piling has extended the bottom of the panels down to a depth, and that's what we're planning to do for the rest of it. In terms of any claims that we might be able to make against the previous designers, there's a report we came to this committee a couple of years ago, where we did a deal with the consultants who took over the entity, who had taken over the entity, who did the design, and we're set to deal with getting a code compliance certificate for the current structure, which they will agree to, small capital contribution from them, and we're finishing that off now.
Okay, just to further add to that explanation, all of which I can concur with, I was shown diagrams of a continuous footing that was supposed to go all the way under that wall, that was supposed to be settled to the rock where it was available, but I understand that there was a traditional area there where a stream used to come out and there is no rock available at some place, but that that continuous footing was supposed to actually bridge that, the complete absence of a continuous footing. And the fact that contractors were paid full amount anyway is something which I think should have been addressed, but from what you say, can't be addressed now, is that right?
It's funny, see, the situation we found ourselves in, and there was debate at the time about whether we go to court around the issues, and there was a deal that was done at the time. And now it's, the work that we've had done, peer review of the wall by others, people who were involved with the original design, it all, because we keep in mind somebody had been involved, confirmed that the structural integrity of the wall is fine, so even though it got undermined, the panels were fine, they're still fine, facing different places, but there's no mention of a footing, of a court. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you. Question for Tony and Jean, on eight point eight, two point three handrails refurbishment. Should they have lasted longer than what they have? I just, and whether the staining etc should have taken place on the wood?
Excuse me, Chair. There was a decision made at the time, again by the government project, around a selection of material for the balustrade, which clearly shown that it's not stood the test of time. And so Jean and John are coming better, we're now looking at replacing some of those with stainless steel. There was some work that was really done that had a different type of treatment, which was more resistant to the conditions. It is a hostile environment. Realistically, we're always going to have to have some maintenance of the balustrades through there. John, Jean, maybe comment about what was selected now is a more long-lasting, robust balustrade, but we have to be realistic that it will require ongoing maintenance in that environment. But, John, Jean, you can do.
Yes, Tony, that's correct. We currently have a mixture of both stainless steel and a two coat coating solution. They are both likely to last a number of years, but they will require maintenance ongoing.
Is that, sorry, a coating over stainless?
No, sorry, no, that's, one solution is stainless steel only, and the other solution is a welded galvanized two coatings over the top.
Sorry, good, second question. Just to quickly review the wall, are you doing any research around New Zealand or internationally, especially I was thinking the east coast of Australia, that may be going through similar problems?
Through this project, there was certainly a number of, a lot of research around coastal currents and options possible around offshore structures and approaches as well, so there was a lot of research on general's project, but it's about the extent of the number we're on at this stage.
As you go forward to the next 10-year plan or maintenance process and upgrading, are you still continuing to research to see how some of those projects are developing and what may have worked a lot more, or a lot more advanced than what we thought of?
While we don't have a specific plan to do, that is an ongoing thing that we would be doing as an organisation, is to keep abreast of those technologies and developments, in particular in terms of the climate change, policy that may drive us to be looking at alternatives.
How long is it estimated sheet pile's going to last, being it's steel is going to be in a very volatile condition with it in here. If it's underground underwater, it doesn't quite as quick as it's at that level. How long are you estimate it's going to last, if it's going to be exposed?
So, when the May 2013 event occurred, there was steel sheet piling that was put in, but the sheet piling that we're now purchasing is a new technology and it's plastic, so designed to explicitly work in these corrosive environments.
So we pull the old sheet, the steel stuff out at some point and replace it?
Whilst we're doing this specific plan to lay out, but if it fails and is corroded, or breached into its life, we would be doing so.
Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about the beach profiles and the way they oscillate, and I see there's a comment about them more or less remaining kind of unchanged, that level, but their sand levels up and down, but more or less within the range they were around twenty years ago. That should be an immense comfort to us, I suppose, although low in light of the sea level rise and the exchange in that might create.
Yes, there was certainly a very positive finding out of the work that I've just that confirmed that. However, on the other hand, it is a volatile moment and the sand levels can change rapidly. We are experiencing some sort of two metre drops within several days, just with the weather. But on the other hand, we're also got, we've been collecting the data and measuring the sand movements and the changes quite aggressively compared historically, so we've been through this time now getting more information about, to us about the shifts in the sand to the wall. So the longer we, the more data we collect over time, the more well positioned we'll be to understand what the needs might be.
You've described on eight point five, communication with the community being important. Would, I'm not totally sure whether you've got particular plans for how you would carry out what's happening there, but would it work for you to have a fourth recommendation saying we know that council staff intend to carry out a level of communication as described in eight point five, or bearing in mind that evoluted to us how important it is?
Yes, I think it would be a reasonable thing to do. We do need to maintain an appropriate level of comms here, that it's obviously a sensitive area and there's a lot of high-value properties adjacent to the wall and there'd be immense interest, so.
And so that's how you, you wouldn't want to change that now, I'm just about to suggest that we add to a recommendation, you wouldn't want to change anything that's in there at all?
No.
You have to consider that.
Yes.
I'll come back to you tomorrow.
Excuse me, Chair. So, we just talked to Jean and John about this, but we have had a series of meetings at, yeah, I think two meetings at the raceable seat, and I do wonder whether we should actually have another meeting at the conclusion next week to say here is the, our formal position, because there has been a bit of interest, and it might be quite a good way of presenting back to the community and say here's what the current position is. Sorry, I mentioned earlier on, I thought it might be a way of just doing, because we've done, I think we've done two meetings then, and it might be good to close that or conclude that by here's our view now.
So, do you want to just check the Williams' brief with Andrew and Lee?
I was just wondering regarding the stainless steel that they've used, do you know what type of stainless steel that has been used?
No, sorry, I didn't know that off the cuff.
Could you possibly email me at nav@304316?
Any other questions? I've got an indication, the motions are to be put, plus the fourth one, which is relates to implications. Anyone wish to second it would want to say it at the first?
I'm happy to see that. So long as that lasts, I should stand the line, I don't think you should prefer eight point five, you should prefer into a Tom's program.
I think, I think it's listed as a report. That means it will be a public meeting, so we just have our, the community for that to do.
No, specific things in there, it talks about, it doesn't talk to a particular meeting or service, it talks to a way of keeping in touch with people, so I thought that allowed some flexibility.
Bruce said the wording out there will see if we may, I've got a potential second in, move this as a reference. Potential second is just, she's got some concerns about the meeting, that's the fourth one, that's all. Staff are committed to carrying out, it's no offence, that staff are committed to carrying out communication with the community is outlined in the report.
May I suggest that, or as may be required as the conditions change, we might be more or less.
Wouldn't want it to be less, so I wouldn't want to change it. It isn't specific.
I think we understand the agreement. So you have to second, someone wants to put it out there? Thank you, Mike.
Change it a few.
So, we've got a second. Any discussion?
Just on that question of communication, so I had a look at the website and it's good and it tells people. I just, the narration, I can get over the Aussie accent, okay, but the narration is kind of robotic, so it's like it's been scanned by something and so the narrative sounds a bit like this.
I do know, but you can carry it.
It's the read text.
I read it.
We must change that, David Stevenson and other words, you know, wanting to force over us and we do it from the obvious. It'll be a lot of that.
I'll turn to the comms people and get them out of here. What do you like voicing things? Neil?
I'm sure that Mia's got some spare time, I used to do that as well. I mean, I would have the motion, all in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry. Thank you. John, Jean, and I think we're going to stay there, or don't, might be, might. And welcome, Bruce. You join us? Would someone please bring a chair to the table, Bruce? Join us? Bruce, do you want to join us? A plug for tea? Now, I'm sure you know the rules. Bruce, I understand that you can have speaking rights, but no voting rights.
Yes, I understand it. Thank you.
Okay, you want to speak now, normally it's staff.
Sorry. You tell me, you do it for me.
You tell me, yeah. Staff?
Following on from the past resolution, we've carried out with an investigation established in this report. Look, in summary, it's been a very positive investigation, particularly the findings around the buildability of the works as well. That's quite achievable. There's obviously some risks around the rock supply, which we can sort of deal with as much as possible, and then there'll be a sort of ongoing management and monitoring. In terms of the funding, if it was to be front-loaded, is the term, by the New Zealand Transport Agency, they're indicating they're willing to continue those discussions, and that seems very positive at this stage. There is some risks around that, but that essentially would go into the process whereby they consider the National Land Transport Fund, so it would be subject to how much money's available in those buckets etc, and also some other criteria that would need to be met. But it looks pretty favorable at this stage. So in terms of the funding side, the intention is to bring back a report to the long-term plan meetings in early January. We will be able to provide you some more specifics around the modelling of those, the impacts of that, and particularly we'll also be able, might be able to give you a bit of an update on where NZTA's view is at at that stage as well, because between now and then, we'll also be submitting a business case which they will consider, which will go into their process and they will consider in due course.
Questions, Dave? Were you, were you to get a question or, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the report. It's really interesting and very encouraging. I'm interested, however, in the issue around the rock face award, which is one of the constraints on the advance speed of construction that you refer to. Is it still the position, the firm preference, or firm position of Heritage New Zealand, that they prefer the existing wall to be buried in situ rather than the stone reused?
That's a very proper question, and through the chair, the answer that is, for the walls that are older than 2000, they are to be buried, left in situ. For those that have been built since then, there is an opportunity where some of the stone would maybe be salvaged and reused if that's at all possible. So they've opened the door to even further discussions about that, and that's very promising and it's a good possibility.
That's encouraging, because obviously if there is such a practical constraint around accelerating the program, it might be worth, it might be, there's a further possibility of an easing of that position to reuse the previous rock if we can't get replacement easily.
But they do have a very clear cut-off about at what point in history that is, you cannot touch and when it can be considered, and the door is open to having those discussions. Okay, thank you. So can I just ask one question, please? Actually, 2000, that's about the time the council started to use the current facing material, is it? So, because year 2000 is actually quite recent. It is relatively recent, yes. So there's most of the historical rock that's same, can't be touched, needs to be buried. That's correct, yes. But there is quite a bit of rock that's since then that's gone on to various places and repairs or partial repairs that can be salvaged. This is stuff that council's put in since 2000, current facing rocks, so we can reuse that stuff. That's correct. It's good.
Richard?
Just about, on the NZTA plan, when does, when decisions get made around that 15, 18 plan for them, when does it come, or when would we know, I guess is the question?
Through the chair again. The final decision that will come, we'll get a very clear indication around about March, the final decision won't come until almost May, I think it is, but it's a staged process and we'll get some clear indications of firstly as around the weathers and appetite or an agreement that they would actually go with the funding, the proposal we're putting up, and that's likely to come or will come before we come, bring back the report in to the long-term plan, but the final definitive won't actually come until essentially May.
Sorry, Tony, we just like to...
The, what we're looking at doing in discussion with the guys is when we come to the long-term plan is, we have a report which will say you've got some options effectively. One is the status quo, which is funded over eight or nine years at three odd million dollars a year, and it'll deliver in eight or nine years. The alternative is a sped-up process, three years to bring it forward, six years. What we're looking to do is to have the modelling that shows the current rating requirements, so not the full caption for the rating requirement, the same all the way through, and then model what that means in terms of potentially increased debt or increased NZTA subsidy, which would be paid out effectively at the end of that period. So the estimates are that bringing forward the construction, this way may save us $3 million in terms of the capital cost.
When you say actually, you'd make $1 million for us and $2 million for NZTA?
Roughly.
Roughly.
Roughly, yeah. So in terms of total cost, so what we're looking, in order to try and get support, we can make, the council can make a decision, my kind of plan is that we model it...
My kind of plan is that we model it so that the financial, the initial financial cost of basically potentially having a higher debt at the start to fund it shorter either through the debt or through NZTA, which is then effectively paid at the end, means that if there's more NZTA funds brought in, then the year eight or nine disappears. So it'll be worst case scenario that we'll try and paint for you in terms of funding if NZTA don't provide additional funds. That's another way you can actually try and model it while keeping, aim to keep the annual rating requirements coming there the same and then model around that as to what might be needed effectively at the end of the period, which will offset potentially the three million dollars saving and capital cost nominally. Which gives us a way of dealing with the NZTA uncertainty. We can actually get on and you can make some decisions, knowing that the worst case is excellent. If NZTA find a way to front load and provide more contribution, then the worst case becomes less worse.
Well, you said, said crucially. Call me a Philistine, but um.
Philistine.
The notion that burying something to save it for future posterity sort of strikes me as somewhat akin to they had to bomb the village in order to save it in Vietnam War stuff. I don't understand that, I don't get it, I'll accept that, but is it a requirement on us or is it a discretionary matter?
Through the chair, that's a requirement of the resource consent that we've got now.
And the, I mean, these things are fashions. I have a historic house, I was, I'm restoring it. Twenty or thirty years ago, I would have been encouraged to replace light with light. For the last twenty years, I would have been encouraged to not attempt to emulate light with light, but to bring a modern interpretation. But when I actually went for the resource consent, I'm now back to light with light. So these things are fashions, is this, is this a longstanding?
I'm not quite sure that this is a question of.
Oh, I'm just trying to work out, sorry.
Yes.
I'm in a bad.
Like, that's, that's fine. A bad word for Philistine is never in the dialogue, I appreciate that. Anyway.
I notice the seawall rock, rock supply shortage. Is there any investigation on whether we can find any of this material out of the peninsula? And possibility of using it?
Through the chair, the answer to that is, part of this report is they've investigated all the quarries around with the, that provide a material that gives the quantum of basalt. So it's the look and the shape, it's more important the shape and the weather, weather suitability of the, of the rock. And it's not so much to do with the quantum, it's the ability to actually get deliberate in the timeframe we're talking about. There's enough there at, in this case Blackie Quarries, but they produce so much in every, every one year. So it's become some more challenging to, to make that greater from, I think they have come up saying we've got two and a half thousand tonnes per year. And this is the program we're talking about, it's almost three times that amount. So it creates a challenge to be able to do that in an efficient and economic way. So it's, this is what we're looking at, is how we can do that and there's number of ways to do it. It's a challenge, but I believe it is manageable.
John.
Mine is also about rocks. I really, I don't, if Richard is just being grumpy, I fundamentally don't understand the position either. And that is for two reasons. Firstly, I am unclear as to why it is deemed more appropriate to mine another headland away to build rock to put, when there is already rock available that could be used for that purpose and how that is historically more appropriate. And there are other reasons, but my question is, and Community Board chair may have a comment on this. I know that the community has had some discussion about the appropriateness of the coloring and particular of the rock, the flat column of basalt, particularly for the area around Portobello, where the rock out there is naturally a completely different color. And the potential amenity impact of it, especially from, from the perspective of being in the harbour and seeing a grey wall from the harbour rather than something which merges nicely with the cliffs. I know that the broading team have in the past, or in recent history, tried to use more appropriate colored rock in any work that they do out there. And I wondered whether there has been any thought to whether we might be able to obtain rock that is a more appropriate coloring.
Well, certainly, I heard staff say that they're still continuing discussions and what I think may be better resolved than asking questions on this, if that was a question, is that someone crafts a motion, stating what council's preference is in light of that.
Well, I do agree, same here, I wouldn't, Chris, you may not be willing to answer this, but please say if you're not. But I wonder whether the conversations within the community have progressed or whether they are still expecting those sorts of conversations to be held during the detailed design phase, which is.
Certainly there was discussion about the rock, but look, quite honestly, the focus is on safety. And, and I think we've got to a point in the community where there is an acceptance, an acceptance of the requirement to bury the rock. And certainly the color has been discussed, but for most people, it's around safety and delivering that. If you can do both, great, but it's around delivering the project, delivering the project.
Is that, sorry, Richard, in light of that, I feel like I have been very helpful to you.
No, no, I wasn't particularly badly, and I'm happy to accept it. Just move on, much more constructive.
John, you've got more to, oh, Jean, sorry.
I'll just make a couple of comments, through the investigation work that we've done, we did have discussions with HPT around some, the level of flexibility. And it would be fair to say that there was positive discussion there, that whilst the resource consent is very clear on its requirements, that in some circumstances, there may be some ability, a bit of a flexible, and those won't be thrashed out until we move into the detailed design. Now, the extent of that, we're not sure on yet, but there is some scope there to be flexible. Particularly in places, for example, where it's not, the seawall may not be visible from the road, et cetera.
Well, just to further understand that flexibility in the, if there is a line in the sand which is two thousand, which seems like an incredibly late timeframe for HPT being, you know, if it was placed in nineteen ninety nine, HPT believe it is a historic thing which shouldn't be moved, I find that interesting. But even with that, even with that provision, what I've been hearing is that there is potential flexibility to bury that condition, is that right? And to use rock from earlier, that HPT are willing to have those discussions? Or is it, they are willing to have discussions about anything post two thousand?
I wasn't necessarily referring to the timeframe per se of what rock can be reused versus what is buried. It may be more so in terms of what the, the rock that we install in terms of the quality, I suppose, or the look of the, of the new replacement wall. But it would be fair to say that we can, we will be updating discussions with HPT around the flexibility generally.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Chris raised the point that this is fundamentally a road. I'm just waiting there, no. Oh, okay, sorry. This is fundamentally a road safety project, which surprises me that under the advantages of accelerating the project, one of them is increased average traffic speeds for motor vehicles. And I wanted to start on to comment as to how that would be an advantage necessarily in a road safety project.
It's a fair point. I'm sure you're guilty of didn't speak for you anyway, yeah.
So through the chair, that's quite correct because it's one of the measurable criteria that's used in the benefit cost analysis for the benefits for it because there is a travel time speed change that comes through there through optimizing the cornering. So it's, it's all part of actually making a safer environment where people travel at a speed that's appropriate for the environment they're travelling through. The net effect is that will have in some places an overall increase in the travel time speeds. But it's, it's not like saying it's going from fifty k to a hundred k, these are relatively, it's a little changes, builds up an overall picture.
Through, as I understand, and as having both driven and biked that road extensively and been to public meetings with Christine, there are some parts of the road which are in serious need of upgrading anyway. The tide, the twisty, the ill-formed, the uneven, the too narrow. So as a result of this project, I imagine we're doing it to a certain standard, that will inevitably improve the travel experienced people in cars. I think that's probably what it's about, over the length and I'm sure Chris will, because there's some parts around, you know, coming into Portobello, for example. I think that's what that bit's covering up and remember, in order to get the full benefit cost, we do need to cover all those aspects off in order to secure NZTA co-funding. So we're certainly not looking to not improve the road surface when we do this, but it will be improved the whole, the whole corridor. I'll just add that also the separation of the modes, the cycles out onto the cycle lanes will contribute to a more free fly traffic as well.
Is there any more questions?
Is that me? Thank you.
Yeah, there's a question around the whole thrust of this, which is about widening rocks or the Portobello. But there are sections further out which still need widening and I'm just wondering about the timing of those, completion of those too.
That's briefly referred to in the, in the report about the second tranche of what's going on and that is the works being delivered at the moment. Harrington Point from Piquetara Two Road to Harrington Point, Piquetara Two, sorry. That's actually under construction right at the moment. Turnbull's Bay, where the slip appears, that's another section that'll be completed in the, in the next almost twelve months, less than six months, sorry. Apologies. Weir Road to Tidewater is another section that we're working on at the moment and at this stage, that's looking to be completed by December twenty fifteen. But it's still a work in progress as far as the design and interior of that. That leaves one section that goes from golf course to. Perfectarity, almost. And that's a portion that's actually just completed as part of our renewals works over a similar timeframe. But it's, the timeframe we're doing here will complete the project.
That's great.
Uh, John?
Yeah. Look, it's back on the rocks again, but the, it's, given that it's mentioned in the report as a critical factor, I, I would have thought, in observing the construction of the seawall over the years that has been developed down in the peninsula, that the seawall, the hand placed rocks themselves were not necessarily cosmetic, but they were a critical factor on the, on the total structure of the walls. Because there is a lot of rock that goes into the extension anyway. Can, can the wall not be built without the sea, without the hand placed rock wall until such time as the rocks are available?
Through the chair, that's one of the issues that we have actually been looking through, we've left, I guess, we've left no stone unturned, stone unturned. Sorry, I know that's. Somebody had to say it somewhere along the way. I was going to say it. But that is one of the obvious ones we have looked at, so talking to historic places and talking to heritage, sorry, through the ecological assessments and with the resource consent too, is to see what sort of staging we can do through there. So it is something we can do, as long as we can maintain the stability of the construction so that it's not being washed away. Because remember, the, the stone wall is architectural, but it's also part of stopping the sea from washing the road away, which is its primary function. So we can do that and we are looking to do that.
Well, that's really the point I'm making, so I don't, from what you've said, it's not a critical factor, it is a factor. But we can build that wall without actually having that hand placed stone wall there.
Potentially, yes.
The, my understanding, also in terms of the procurement process for this, opening the door, I suppose, for the contractors to come back and say here's how they could do this in the shorter timeframe and how they would actually deal with that. Will be certain standards around that and it is possible they might come along and say, well, we can do the whole lot and come back and place the wall over time, you know, the facing or whatever. And we'll leave that door open so that we get the best outcome in quickest time while maintaining the standards that we're doing to make time.
I'm not wanting to upset Richard any further. My, I'm a bit confused about why we're asking Heritage New Zealand about reusing a rock. My understanding of the process, and I might be completely confused here, is that you get a resource consent and we have some input, we ask for it, or NZTA, whoever it is, asks for it. And that Heritage New Zealand has something to say and hopefully we can all sort something out that everyone's happy about. But we're not really, I'd have thought, asking their permission. I mean, Pol Potish, though they turn out to have been by now, I don't see that that that's the limit of what we can do. I would have thought that what we want to do if we've now sort of consented to it as part of our resource thing, either we put it forward to them or having talked to Heritage New Zealand and they just wanted us to do that and we agreed to it or whatever. We're now in a position where we're shorter of rocks anyway, can't we just go back as a, an amendment to our resource consent and ask to not bury those rocks? With or without the permission, for want of a better word, from Heritage New Zealand?
I think Tony wants to answer that.
We've been issuing resource consents with a series of conditions on them, we have to comply with conditions. One of the decisions that was made, and this is historical position with the seawall previously, is an agreement with Heritage New Zealand to bury the rocks. That was positioned, as I understand it, that they took through that process. We could have challenged that, there was, I know some discussions at the community board level about that. Decision was made to secure the consents with those conditions. So if we wanted to do anything different, then we would need to go back to change, amend the conditions, which is a process for that. And we'd have to get agreement from Heritage New Zealand to that. What that recommendation up there does is ask us to do that and the outcome might be a change to the consent. But if we went back and applied for a change now, we would be unlikely to get that in any short term unless we've done our work very well and would potentially add a further delay to the project. So that's something that we need to work through.
Whether or not we asked Heritage New Zealand, when, when you say we have to ask them, if we wanted to have it amended, I'd have thought we either asked for an amendment or we asked for an amendment with the cooperation of Heritage New Zealand. Those would be the two options if we want to. To not bury that.
I would agree, the, the likelihood of getting an amendment without having got some agreement with Heritage New Zealand is likely to be a lengthy process because Heritage New Zealand presumably come in and say we want the rock buried. So unless there is that discussion and some kind of agreement, going back for variation is either going to be straightforward if we've got some kind of agreement or potentially quite lengthy because there's a process you'd have to work through. And it would be up to the regional council to determine what that process was. It could gain openly consent up, so there's a risk around those things.
Yes, so it is worth potentially widening that. An option is to tell Heritage New Zealand, we're going to be short of rocks, are you really stupid enough to want these buried where the sun don't shine? Rather than use them again where we can see them historically?
That might be our strategy when we go and negotiate. But the intent will be.
Knowing, knowing that we can go and ask for an amendment anyway and it probably won't hold anything up because it's.
Be clear, asking for an amendment will take time. If we don't have agreement from Heritage New Zealand, we do that, it will take longer time.
Yes, but it may still be within the time we're taking to do things anyway as we work our way along. I mean, we're being held to ransom by this Pol Potish sort of approach, aren't we? Can't we just widen it wherever?
Point of order, Madam Chair. I don't know. I don't know if it's necessarily helpful to refer to any funding agency or a government department along the lines that has been inferred by the councillor, a mass slaughterer of people. As well as.
Are you asking that that comment be retracted?
I am.
Disparaging of an organisation, are you happy to withdraw that comment, please, councillor Calvert? In order that I don't have to uphold that statement, that point.
I don't consider them precisely the same as Pol Pot, so I withdraw.
So I withdraw a suggestion that they're just identical to polpott.
Thank you. I just wondered, the fact of the matter is that we saw the consent from the Ataga Regional Council, which is the regulatory authorities of this. And if we go back to them for a variation, they would include all the parties, the affected parties, they would have to be part of that process. So it would be a risky approach.
Thank you, and it was our choice at the start, actually. It doesn't go in with that as a condition. So doesn't, this though, Heritage New Zealand can't just let us, can they? No, they can't. But if they consent, then that becomes a different process. Yeah, but they still have to go back to all those parties that you're talking about. So it's just a matter of, I mean, you'd still have to go the same process. That this isn't a suggestion that they can actually just say, yes, we don't... My understanding is a variation on very limited terms applying to one condition may be dealt with without a hearing if it's got this, if every particular party that they think agrees to it. It wouldn't necessarily adhere in the under that basis if they consent. But that's my understanding of the process? So thank you.
Jonathan? I did have one other question that I lost track of at my head of steam. That is in relation to the cost assessment that has been done. Has that, or has that not, or does that, or does that not include the costs that would be associated with remarking and realigning a section of road that has really been done with the new alignment, which will be, to be consistent with the new alignment, which will be in place?
Certainly the project, the projects up there was to proceed on this timeline would be executing and implementing the changes to the wood as part of the project.
So it will be included?
Yes, it does include. Now, the costs that, just to clarify, the costs that are stated in this project in this report here are for the basis of the new sections. And I'll check with Mike, but I'm not sure whether the cost for the realignment of the current sections is included in this. But that would be done and implemented seamlessly.
And a second question, just about the timeframes. I take it that the detailed design phase has not yet been gone through with the community? Um, no. In which case, is there a risk that without having yet gone through that detailed design phase with the community, there may be additional costs associated with the outcomes of that process which have not yet been factored into this budget? So for example, having been present at a number of those meetings, the community, I think, quite rightly have expectations around access to the foreshore, steps in various places, those sorts of things, which I imagine may add some element of cost to the process. I, off the top of my head, I wouldn't imagine that that cost would be necessarily significant. But has that been considered?
Through the chair, the costing has been worked out on the consent plans that have been published and consulted on. There is not a direct allocation for ex, particular community issues such as the steps as such. But it is acknowledged that that sort of discussion will need to go forward so that there will be a communication with the community around the particular features they're looking for, the areas that they'll be including in it.
And so I understand that certainly with Harrington Point at the moment in terms of the detailed design, the costings are for the generic, you know, five, six metres width, here's the overall design, I refer this. I mean, sitting down with local communities around those detailed bits. And seeing between Vauxhall and McCandrie Bay, there are a number of particular areas which will need some, you know, detailed work and design. So that's part of it. And I think we've got a lot better since the early Mack Bay reclamation days around that.
And I guess just a final question. If the community, say for example, around Portobello, does come back through that detailed design phase and say, it is really important to us to have a different colour of rock or a more globally appropriate colour of rock, will it be too late in the process if we sign off on these recommendations today for that to be amended at that time? Because I wouldn't like to see us prevent anything from being discussed through that detailed design process when we were quite clear with the community at the time. That would be a possibility.
The recommendations are effectively giving you an update on, I suppose, the discussions that we had at the last annual plan about how do we deliver this better, faster. This is a high-level, hearsan approach that we think we can bring it forward. This funding, um, doesn't deal with the detailed design components. My only comment would be that I suspect that our resource consent would be the constraining thing in terms of what that specifies. And if there was a desire to change rock, then we'd have to judge it in terms of the delay that might mean to that particular part of it going through resource consent process. So and I think we'd be working with the community board and the community about that. And we'd have to judge the risks as we go through, I suspect.
You'd like a question?
Just to comment on that, would that be answered? It might be helpful to know that there was to be a boardwalk in the Portobello area as part of the Heritage New Zealand requirements. And there was extensive conversations with the Portobello community around not putting that in and not viewing that part of rock or the road can be delivered, the white woods can be delivered within the footprint. This is in the village, within the current footprint. So that really isn't an issue there specifically. So that conversation has gone on. And there's been some preparatory work around access and so forth done along the way. Obviously, there'll be final tweaking with the design. But certainly our community has kept on talking with. So, you know, I'm very comfortable with the level of that at this point.
So Doug, please?
In here, your budget for 40 and 50 annual plan was 22.8. When was that last updated? Is it on track, minus the $3 million off that? Is it still on track coming to that budget?
Certainly through the investigation, whatever we've done, we revisited that budget to see whether it was still appropriate, based on some of the more recent work that's been done. And concluded that it was reasonable.
Thanks, there are other questions. I'm just going to ask, just checking out question, clarifying as much for the public who are listening to us on TV. In the report, you consistently use the terms Vauxhall, between Vauxhall and Portobello, but that's not necessarily having a direction of, the order of, of what we're going to do.
No, there's no suggestion on how will be implemented and delivered.
And it will come down to possibly whether rock or carbon materials are going to come in?
Certainly that will, there'll be consideration through the procurement process. And as Mr Avery mentioned before, we will be having conversations with the contractor about what is the best way to deliver this efficiently and minimize disruption to the public.
And just on that, the plan is to go to the contractor and go, how would you build this the most efficient, fastest way? And they might go from Portobello in or Vauxhall out, or either way. But under the current proposal, the entire, we'd deliver the entire project within the current timeframe for just delivery in the Portobello and Mack Bay section. So the sequence, so the amount of it's Portobello and Mack Bay, if it was to be the next bit, we would deliver the entire road within that shortened timeframe anyway. So if we can leave the sequencing to the construction or the constructibility in the contractor, we will deliver it well within the timeframes that come up for either section of the two sections.
Now, Mike's indicated with the amendment adding number three, the rubber, and Richard, second of all?
Well, I was going to move it, but please move it, I'll send it.
Yeah, you're right, thanks. Now, Chris, do you want to be the first one to speak to it? Or are you here to speak?
Yes. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to come today and talk to you. I made a commitment to our community that I would follow this through the various stages of council between our board meetings. We've had our last board meeting for the year and our next one is up to the 29th of January. First up, I would just say, in terms of going back to look at a variation to the consent, please, let's not get sidetracked on this. I don't think this is a huge issue for the community about the rock. I understand there's a supply issue, but we want this delivered. And I know the council's recently, with a lot of very large projects and financial challenges at the moment, and this really is a good news story. I understand we're not across the line yet, but there's huge anticipation in the community. And I was at a community meeting last night. And I was asked to congratulate council on the investigations thus far and council staff for the work they've done. The community, as far as I can ascertain, is not concerned about the order if the project is delivered in this timeframe. They're not prepared to let go of it though quite yet until, I see Mr Avery smile, until they're very certain about the timeframe of delivery, and I understand that. But the thing that we all had in common at the last annual plan hearings was we all wanted it delivered, and then we went our separate ways on the order. I noticed that the only disadvantage noted in the report is around inconvenience to traffic. And I think it's fair to say that the community understands and have put up with disruption for quite some time and is prepared to put up with it for longer if the project was delivered in this timeframe. It will be disruption. I believe it would be handled well, given the experiences we've had to date in recent times. And that there will be patience for that because of the accelerator program if we manage to get this across the line. I just want to finish by reminding you of something because I think it's really important that in looking at all these facts and figures and talking about rocks and talking about a business case, that we remember why we're doing this. And the New Zealand Road Safety Strategy for NZTA is around that safer journeys. And that people do make mistakes on the road. And this system is around reducing the price paid for a mistake so that crashes don't result in fatalities and serious injuries. And I want to read you an email that I received this morning. And for me, it is a really good reminder. So there were two accidents in the past week, 10 days, on the road. One was in the Broad Bay area, and one was in the Cove, at the Cove. And I came across the second one, flashing lights. And of course, my first thought was, I hope there's no serious injury. Little was I to know who was involved with this and how it all panned out. So this is from the mother of some of the motorists involved. So let me read it to you. "I read with interest the article in the ODT about widening the full length of Portobello Road to make it safer for motorists. What a good idea to possibly bring this project forward and get the jobs done sooner rather than later, I thought. Only days later, on Wednesday, November the 19th, last Wednesday, in the early evening, my two daughters were travelling on the same piece of road. My 17-year-old, who has a, who has held a restricted licence since February 2014, was driving, and her 19-year-old sister, who has a full licence for three years, was in the passenger seat. A vehicle came around the corner on my daughter, who was driving the side of the road. Unfortunately, there was a slow vehicle bay that she could swerve into. The oncoming vehicle corrected and missed the car travelling behind my girls, but continued to hit the vehicle behind them. This has left my daughter driver very shaken. And her comment was, what would I have done if there wasn't a slow vehicle bay? She has relived the moment when she saw the vehicle coming towards her and wonders what she would have chosen, a step drop into the harbour or a head-on collision? Not one of the decisions apparent is expecting a teenager to make on a Wednesday evening. As the passenger, Laura, said Madeline was doing everything right. She was driving at 60 kilometres in a 70-k zone. As she said, that was the speed she felt comfortable on a windy road. There are so many things we're grateful for. Grateful that it was daylight, grateful that she had driven that road before during her driver training, grateful for the defensive driving course she had done, grateful that she abides by the road rules and is a sensible driver, who drives to the conditions, and grateful that she had her older sister in the vehicle and was not alone. But most of all, we are grateful for the slow vehicle bay, a wider section of road that allowed her to take evasive action and avoid a plunge into the harbour or head-on collision. And suddenly, the article about widening the peninsula road became real to me. On my behalf, please, Chris, please continue to urge the council to speed up this project and widen the full length of this narrow road for the sake of all motorists. Widen the road enough so that when a motorist is faced with a split second decision as a car coming round the corner on the wrong side, the result isn't fatal. I cannot help but think how the outcome for our family could have been so different last Wednesday evening had it not been for that slow vehicle bay." And yes, that is emotional, but we do have to keep reminding ourselves. And I come back to NZTA's Safer Journeys program, which is all about having a road that's forgiving enough so that when somebody makes a mistake, it's not fatal. So I leave you with that. I know those two girls are really hit very hard, actually. And I don't even like to think about the possibilities. But that's why we're doing it. And I would just really encourage you to focus on that and not get sidetracked on rock.
Chris, anyone else wish to speak to the motion? So it might go from actually asking you the chance to speak to the person.
I've got to say, I really just want to say thank you to staff, actually, for the work they've done on this. Because I think when I moved to see if we could, at Bank Hare East, to see if we could do something to speed it up, it was, I wasn't sure whether that was possible, but I hoped it was. And I think that's the work the staff have done to find ways to potentially achieve this. I just think this would be really nice. So I want to do that. I totally agree that we shouldn't allow the issue of rock to get in the way of getting this job done. And if that were to be the case, I would certainly not be supportive of it. But I do still more or less endorse under string that we should be asking. My inability to understand shouldn't be confused with, I wouldn't wish to appear in the same paragraph as Mike and Polpott, please. So I, but I think we should at least engage in the conversation. But I would presume that would be expensive, slim, thanks, now.
Just clarification, your indication there was, your driver was to accelerate it in a different...
Absolutely, yes.
Nice range, you move.
Thank you, yes, just following Richard's comment. I think it's directed to the staff being, at this time of this day, when we are hearing that things are possible to speed up the completion of the project. It is, is it our most expensive project on our books? I think it is certainly one of the most expensive at this present time. And very encouraging to hear that progress made below, between Portobello and Harrington Point in terms of the work to be completed there in the next 12 months. I just wanted to mention a bit about the rocks. My impression was that by entomating the old seawall, that that was a more complete way of preserving, even if it's putting out a sign, an historic feature. My 20 years of experience of driving this road is that on the parts of the seawall that are exposed to the long features, they are constantly renewed and replaced with new rock. And so even if we do reuse, and it might be just simply a practical way of of actually getting some supply of rock, reuse the old wall, those rocks will eventually disappear if they're used on those exposed parts of the wall over time. As for the average speed increase, I looked at that as well and thought, hmm, what's that mean? Does that mean an increase in safety or a decrease? But I took from it actually, because the day I came in behind a visitor who was travelling at 40 kilometres an hour in the seventies, with about 12 cars behind going obviously at the same speed. An area that, that reduces the average speed, obviously. And if we can have a situation where our passing bays and perhaps cyclists, they're also holding up traffic as well, then we will get more efficiency and an increase in speed. Not necessarily will it be to impair the safety. In fact, it might improve it because the temptation when you're following a very slow vehicle is to take a risk on this road. And just to finish off, we talked a bit about costs here today, but not precisely. But there is a hidden cost. And that hidden cost is in the reclamation of the intertidal gravel zone, an ecological zone that is really important for the ecological health of the harbour. And we continue to kind of overlook that. And I would be the last person to say we need to stop this and dig up what we've reclaimed. But the point is that in my estimation, this amounts to several hectares of ecology, ecological zone, the intertidal zone. That is important to all kinds of bird life, the shellfish and so on. And it's contributing to the health of the, and the ecological life. to the health and the ecological life of the harbour. There is a way of overcoming this and that is to build artificial reefs in the harbour. I'm not suggesting we even possibly look at it and considering our real financial constraints right now, but one day we will be out of those and maybe we can replace that, the zone that we've lost.
Chris, simply?
Thank you. First of all, I think, Council Thompson, thank the staff. I think it is important to acknowledge the role that Council Thompson played in releasing that this work be done and certainly I think it's been a very helpful contribution to the conversation. I look forward to seeing the detail of how it may be financially managed because I don't think we really have that in this report. I'm curious about that and I'm curious about, yeah, seeing the detail of that, but I think certainly at face value has significant merit. So I thank the Chair of Finance for that contribution. In relation to the, sorry, the Chair of the Community Board for the board's advocacy in this area and the positive contributions that the board has made, working with staff to helping the community work collaboratively on these conversations. I think, I take the board chair's view and understand the focus on safety and understand that the community's desire for this project to be done as quickly as possible and without undue or further delay. Certainly, the community has waited a long time for this project anyway. However, I don't think that council's desire to value add around this project and to ensure that it is done in a, whether it's less intrusive ecologically or to get better amenity, a more amenity focused outcome, or something which includes an arts and culture or improved heritage component should be interpreted as a desire to sew up the project or even that necessarily does sew up the project. I think that if there is an opportunity for us to do that value add in without adding to the timeframes around the project, then we should be exhausting the opportunities to do that. This, as it has been called out, is one of the most significant projects that this council will have the opportunity to spend money on over the next few years, should we just take the opportunity which this project presents and in line with our motions around wanting to ensure that our policies and strategies are all aligned and our investment in projects represents all of our different strategies rather than just one of them. I think that we need to be seizing this opportunity to do that. And thankfully, there are some fantastic community members out there full of inspiration and ideas and passion for ensuring that we do that. We have people who have great ideas about using salachonia instead of grass along the verges. We have people that have passion for the type of rock and the colour of rock that is used. We have people interested in adding sculptures or adding features which are, might reflect some of the cultural heritage and artistic talent that exists on the Peninsula. And all of these things will add, I think, a significant amount, not only to this project, but to the whole visitor experience, to the whole experience of living on the Peninsula. So in speaking to this motion, what I want to highlight for the staff working on this and the council as a whole is that, gee, we need to be making the most of those opportunities. We need to be engaging with the existing New Zealanders as strong as we can. We need to be engaging with the community representatives who have been testing salachonia and trying to find out whether or not that would be possible to use that. We need to be engaging with community artists to find out whether or not they can value add. We need to be finding out whether or not there are cheap ways that we can enhance regiswork, enhance the design of the wall such that it will mitigate the loss of that intertidal habitat, which is indeed significant. So that can happen during the detailed design phase. I am very keen that we place significant emphasis on doing that detailed design phase in close collaboration with the community and do it as a significant piece of work because it is indeed significant. So that's my insight. I'm looking forward to seeing the detail of that planned program of engagement around the detailed design phase and I would like staff to ensure that none of the work endorsed by two in any way closes off any possible options through that detailed design phase, which will come up shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, you've raised in this review that whether staff want to answer this question, the process in the design, detailed design work going forward with the community. Have you seen that done as a, having some public meetings out there, I just want to understand thoroughly that process? Will we get to question that? No, it's just, it was being raised and I think it just will enact and that's the debate.
While there's no specific plans of how we will engage with the community through that design phase, we're under no illusion that it's important and that in particular there'll be a lot of involvement from the community as we go through that process. So the broad timeframes are three years to design and build the project. The first year is really about the community engagement and design in that process to make sure that we have incorporated those specific desires et cetera through it. So there is a long, strong focus on that and we acknowledge that this project, whilst it's a quick build to a certain extent, is very much about the community going on and being a part of that process as well. So that's our general principle of approach.
We normally only last three months to a motion. I'm sorry, Chris, I've just got to be too long to see if I'm... Okay, before I go to Mike, I'd like to apply on the other end of the interview.
Look, I support both recommendations and congratulations to staff to get this far. Thank you to Richard to so perceive, so perceive from start. My question's around that third proposed motion and I want to know from staff, what do they think we're asking you to do? A, to relitigate the resource consent or B, to ask Heritage New Zealand to consider favorably some changes in the way that they could work within the existing resource consent? Because I think it's important that staff signal the consent, the staff, they understand what it is because if it's saying to relitigate the resource consent, I won't be voting for it. But if it's saying some sort of negotiations within the parameters of the existing resource consent, no problem.
The general approach is to try and work within the existing resource consent, so B, as you suggested, is see what sort of things could be used.
Okay. Chris, I'll go to Mike's work. I'd just like to thank Tony Flickler for the work that he's done in this relation because I think it has taken the council staff to a position that they aren't necessarily familiar with and just like to acknowledge that because it has been, there is a substantial amount of time and effort going into roading issues generally and his form has been significantly gone because of that, reflecting the work that's going in in his departments and the fact that we're getting to a point that's quite different, I really appreciate the time that's gone into that. And Jean and Jean, Mike, everyone. So thank you very much. Michael.
Can we, oh, sorry. Unless Mike, Mike was just going to say this, can we change that to say what Jean has just decided it said? Because if it says within the existing resource consent, then it could say that.
I think it's quite clear as it is. It's not asking to relitigate, it's asking simply to engage and that's certainly my point.
At the end of the day, if they all agree.
Was only existing.
Am I ready? Okay, first of all, I would just clear that up, what you were saying earlier, Hillary, I certainly didn't mean all this as a, as far as I'm concerned, point three, is asking if there is any flexibility with this. I want this to enable staff to take it a level further. If it can't be, I don't want the project to stop because it can't be. We'll source here rocks as we carry on. But look, there's not much more to say. I'll just thank the esteem for a kind group that had your plan when we had had your community come in here and that it didn't always do what they were going to be, but picky campers. I won't say I'm picky camping, but I would also, I would also, you've already spoken once, come here. We've, I would also like to just commend the staff, I think, to get this to this point in just a few months, the manual plan is actually quite amazing and anything that raised, save three million dollars or possibly three million dollars and fifteen and a half percent, I think that's outstanding and we must never forget that. But more than anything, I think what this will provide is a safer road and environment, not just for Port of Bella, not just for Andrew Bay, but for all the residents that use the Peninsula Road and the thousands of visitors that go down there. And so that's why I think this is a good thing and for this board, obviously.
Mike, I'm going to put the motion, will we play it, if they say aye?
Aye.
Against? Carrie. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Thank you, Jean and Mike. Laura, Ian and Pat. Here you are. Aaron, you want to be the first one to move this at some stage? Please, Ryan.
I'll be, I'll be, I'm a rather rotten.
Laura, would you like to speak to this or Ian or Pat?
I suggest to do every five years because I think the balance will probably come from questions because I think I've probably put something in front of you that you weren't expecting. But we did put the survey out there and it was fabulous. It went up to over seventeen hundred properties, they were both rate paid and tenants and we got a sixteen point eight percent return on that. We were very surprised that those returns were largely weighted towards businesses. So that came as a surprise to us. And with the information that has come through from the survey and from talking to people in the CBD, working and living in the CBD or owning businesses, we've developed a model that we propose to roll out in three stages. So the report largely addresses stage one, which will be next year's annual plan process.
Questions? Councilwoman Gresh.
Thank you. I've just been trying to get my head around the stage one, stage two stuff that ever met on page ten eight.
I have an overhead of that. Do you have the other? And I can pass around, oh, you've got colour copy section. It was in black and white, it was very hard to read. Let me scroll down some. So this here is in stage one.
Drop on the screen now.
So this is the pilot neighbourhood drop-off facilities. And what we're looking at here is putting a facility, might not look exactly like that, but basically some bins to collect glass and mixed recycling. So the weird bit that you're looking at there is eleven hundred litres, it's proposed something, two of those to collect homing wood recycling, which would be paper, cardboard, plastics, containers, plastic containers, one to seven, and cans, and also a bottle bank. We've worked out that the capacity of that would be, when we were looking at this originally in two thousand and ten, so that's about thirty-five apartments. So we're looking at increasing the frequency and to cover the roughly two block radius. Two conditions away.
So in terms of stage one, what we're proposing is the two circled shaded bits as opposed to wiggly shaped one are the radius that we would expect to use, the two pilot drop-offs. One of the reasons for doing the pilot is that's based on how far people have said they've travelled. It may or may not be what people will actually travel when push comes to shove. So based on the survey, we're assuming we would need six, but the intention is to actually pilot it to see whether or not they've got larger or smaller catchments, how much of barrier roads and things are, as to whether we need six and move towards the locations before we go all out in future years.
So stage two is the wiggly.
No, stage.
The wiggly line place, we've got, that's the area we're proposing to bring on to pick sites like that. So we've floated that with our current conflict because they're going down half of those roads anyway. So we've said, you know, would you go down the rest of those roads? It makes more sense to ring on to pick sites.
So for the apartments on Princess Street, for example, that are, yeah, that are not within that wiggly line but quite clearly adjacent to it.
Yes.
Would one option that was open to those guys be to opt in but to take their things around the corner and put them on the street around the corner?
Well, that hasn't been investigated on that. So you would have to look at, for apartments where people are living there and they can go and collect, businesses, consumers, they get this would be lifted out, but that's not the one.
And we were also trying just to keep it as a clear line was Princess Street was sort of a demarcation. So that it's clear that that was still the daily service of the litter guns and that sort of collection of dollars as well. Those other two circle sites was also picked at, council owns those properties because they're actually car parks that we have control over. So we figured that that would be the easiest place to make a start. A few of these other places, we'd need to go and negotiate with other property owners, private companies and things like that. So we figured we'd take the easy route first and make it so wonderful that we can then take them over to these other places and say, look, this is how good it is.
And just by way of allaying any concerns that might come out from the worst car parks, there are data space within those car parks which we can use, not actually taking out active dogs?
We were very conscious of renewed generation for car parks.
I also know a lot of people tell me they're living around at night with their recycling and put them in public places bins. So recycling's taken over the city.
So is it, it's possible then that this number, the circle which has one hundred and three, so arguably the biggest density, it's likely that they would have some service but not before twenty sixteen, seventeen, etc.
That's right. So it's likely to find that, because it is that much bigger and also you'd be looking at a big facility for that, you'd want to find suitable space for it to see what comes out of the initial phase one. We would be looking into that during that year, so we would look at that year before we started that booking with most people or whether bringing them into service is the better option. So that story's been with this discussion.
Okay. And just in relation to the proposed, stage one point three, proposed improvements are built, collecting service. It's mentioned hosted back-up house locations, but I note in the survey response that you got, only something like forty-five percent of respondents had back-up house locations. Does this mean net, under this circumstance, a number of businesses that currently receive cardboard collection service would not be eligible or would not be able to be serviced under this proposed model?
No. What we'd be asking is, because this would be on private land, so back-up house locations aren't council property and we'd be putting the call out to businesses, because not all businesses do, but they tend to cluster, so you get hospitality that tend to cluster, retail clusters, that sort of thing, where somebody does have space to host a bin, that they would be neighbourly and share that with their neighbours. And there would be benefit to them because it's probably going to be a cheaper service for them as a business, but they would need to open it up to share with their neighbours and we can help facilitate that and put in a memorandum of understanding what needs to happen. So and just like the ring, they aren't negotiating, they're putting out a council contract, we can bring this by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you and thanks, Kath, for your work and this has been great to see. On the topic of neighbourliness and businesses clustering together, are you confident that that will also work in a business and retail clustering in that, a ground level retailer and the first floor level tenant? Well, obviously there would be needed, there will need to be a degree of cooperation between them in regards to collection points because I'm assuming you wouldn't want more than one, even if there was one possible. But in the conversations that you've had, you're comfortable that that isn't going to be an obstacle, that relationship?
We've put out a call and some of the conversations that we've had, because we went around and supported a lot of businesses and some businesses offered up space, we were talking to them. were talking to them, saying, well, hey, we've got heaps of room and we could do that and we know the guys who want it, we've got anything. So there were those that offered it up freely, but it would be a case of putting that out. And this is a highly collaborative model and wouldn't just be working with the businesses and also asking the residents to do something under a council collection. It's bringing the contractors into that conversation as well. So where I have seen that work is that down the student inn at the university, they have fifty collection points, back house collection points on university properties that are shared facilities, so it's a five collection, cardboard and paper. And though that is their properties, whereas this isn't, it's certainly been something that has worked very well for them.
I think the other comment I would make is what we're hearing from the businesses is a strong demand for the soft plastic to be collected as well, along with concerns about, you know, people really many want the cardboard collection service, but the having to put it out on the street and all that means for having things standing around, the ability to keep it dropped at curbside and extend it to the other materials is, has some real practical problems. How successful we can make this, I guess we won't know until we put our toes in there and see how many people are really willing to try to make it work. But there are some very significant challenges with trying to extend that service and keep it on curbside in the CBD. So and I guess that's sort of part of the, whilst we would be intended to attempt to fully that rollout in fifteen, sixteen year, there is still an element of pilot to that in as much as if we can't get enough posted locations or they're really causing problems for people, then it may cause everything. But it has greater potential if people will buy it.
With regards to the pilot drop off points, and I appreciate that, because that's land that we own, that is an easy option for us. You don't have any concerns with regards to safety in those areas, particularly around light, like in the evenings lighting or load for traffic? Or any design safety issues?
We've looked at safety, we've looked at those sites, so there's really good, the down street one has above lighting, so it's going to be well lit through the night. And there's also potential for another lighting in there as well. And the one on Water Street, actually on the corner, there's going to be a big mural there and it's on the corner across the street, so there's quite a lot of, you know, traffic down there. Whatever screens we put up, they would be perfectly clear through them and they would be low enough to, you know, ensure that people are safe. I think that's really important too.
And just finally, with regards to the design, and I thank you for giving to the design elements of the facility, the bottle bank structure, from what I can get it from this illustration, which does show up the giant green wheelie bin option from a design perspective, but I wonder if there are more subtle or appropriate options in that line?
The wheelie bins are practical for collection, but it will be behind the screen, so you're not going to have a wheelie bin like the temple on the landscape. And the bottle banks, we have these down in the student area already, so I also know that there's quite a number of hospitality businesses that will take the bottles all the way down to the north end to recycle in the bottle banks down there, so these ones will be probably more convenient located for them as well. But it is the screens that we can incorporate the design elements into. And as I said, this is a finalised design, this is just to give you an idea of the thinking around it. And we would like to go back to dealing businesses and those communities that we're looking at doing the pilots and working with them, they would like their facility to look like.
I think you might be. Hillary.
Just thank you very much for the work you've done here. I think it's very complex and I think it might take us a couple of times to even get it vaguely right, so good on you for trying on our behalf. The, it seems to me that each item is difficult, but our best guess about the bottles is likely to be that, I would have thought that businesses don't want the bottle place in their place, they don't want to pay for the bottle place and be part of that plan, but they certainly do want to use somebody's fairly handy themselves. I mean, if that's the likelihood, is that what you think the likelihood is? I've just sort of watched, for example, like Turi who are just, you know, there's a recycling bottle place and it's just the pub's rubbish bin, only the pub doesn't want it over any side.
These bottle banks, historically, it's been great container type bottle banks put out and they were used, you know, to just dump rush and they didn't work very well. These bottle banks were kept dying a couple of years now, so we have three down in the student area, they have less than three percent contamination in them, and people even go to the extent of taking the lids off. So they are colour sorting their glass. Very effective. They're three day bottle banks and they're collecting about that for the kilos of glass a month, so they're doing really well. These pilot stations here are primarily set up for the residents, but we know that there will be some small businesses that come along and use them. The big businesses, the big glass users in your hospitalities and your hotels and anywhere you've got food service, and we're not council can operate in that space because what council can't do as well as industry is we don't have the level of flexibility in our services because we've got to look how they will be paid for. But in stage two, I am looking at, and it needs more investigation, how I can encourage commercial operators for best practice. So we're then working with hospitality to get source separated glass and collection service in for that.
Education too.
That's a big funny choice, isn't it?
Yeah, thanks very much for this report. It seems to me a proposal for a great leap forward in waste management in the city. Two questions, one was about on seventeen two, there is a number, more than seventy percent of overall waste could be recycled. Did you have any idea of a breakdown or is that a bit too hard to work out in terms of the big items like cardboard or food waste?
Yes, it was from twenty bags, the refuse bags that we collected, and it wasn't, I had got breakdown, so I'm more than happy to provide it. And most of it, I think, I think around fifty percent was recyclable materials. I didn't count soft plastics in that audit because at the time I wasn't getting that feedback about soft plastics, and that was considered to general waste, so it actually would be higher if we counted that. And then the food waste differently from bags that were coming from hospitality, there was quite a bit of food waste in there. We know that overall from bags from households, forty percent is food waste.
It'd be a higher amount, but not.
From bags coming from hospitality, yeah, they definitely have large quantities, food waste, large quantities of glass.
Thanks, Val. Just a clarification I made of the recommendation three, are you suggesting that the committee provide feedback or is it something, is it staff providing feedback or the feedback from others?
So I guess ultimately this will be for consideration as part of the LTP process, as to exactly what goes with the LTP. I guess what we were trying to gauge, with still some time to do more work if we need to before then, is whether or not we're on the right track.
Yeah, Laura, we could, we'd like to say, so we could provide feedback, try. I think you want.
Noting that staff will provide feedback or that we.
No, no, we're asking for feedback from you as to whether or not we're on the right track.
Okay, thank you. Just saying for that clarity. I had a question and I hadn't until, I can't just answer the question, thought that I had any interest in this, I'd prefer to hear it just for clarity sake. The Kissing AKPA hosts one of these in Little March for recycling, so that's coming from that background, but I don't think it's in conflict, except I negotiated seemingly poorly on this. It wouldn't go out to long term plan, appreciate it's long term plan as well. The areas that are not going to be in stage one, if there was a, what process, if they want to be sped up, would they take? I mean, would they, if we, we may receive a number of submissions, in fact, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty eight more, maybe three hundred and thirty one submissions, so they want to be included now.
Well, we'd like to engage with them as soon as possible. And if they really are keen for us to go into their neighbourhood, it's looking for space, so on this map, there's red areas that you can see are council property. So obviously we've put the two facilities that we can go ahead with fairly rapidly on council property. It's finding the locations, the suitable host locations for them.
So if businesses came forward or property owners in those areas and said, we have got sites for you and would really like to host us, that may be a possibility.
Yes, I mean, really, we're offering a, I guess, a bit of a challenge to the commercial areas that you guys have indicated through the survey that you really want the service, you want it off the street because you're going to be street appeal. So we're coming back at them saying, if you can come up with some spaces for us, we'll do our best to try and facilitate a service based around there.
The challenge then is for the long term plan is to ensure that everyone is consulted on, should be, and so that those offers would have to come in before January in order to be included to, for any of the other areas in stage two to be included in stage one, really, because otherwise we wouldn't be giving fee notice to some people that they may be charged.
I think there's two slightly different elements to it. There's the residential where we're proposing the two, and we're proposing at this stage, this early stage, that during the pilot year, that's general rates funded. Once we get to the full six and everybody in that area has got it, then we can look at targeting the rates for that. And then there is the second one, where assuming we can get the buy in, we would be looking to put the commercial hosting in as many as we can get, as soon as we can get. We have, I think it's fair to say, between now and January, we've got some more work to do on exactly where the targeting rate line would be and what those costs would be.
Thank you, and for that clarity, I think what I was coming from is this is a long term plan and therefore should be looking out with some group, certainly if we could on going forward for three years at least.
So certainly by the time we get to the January setup, we would be expecting to have the information to say, right, okay, this is the area that from year two, we'd expect to have this targeted rate and so on and so forth. We just haven't had the time to work right the way through that process at the moment, which would also mean that if those people wanted to submit and say, actually, we're quite happy to, we want you to do this more quickly, then that same group would have been consulted with a view to it being that from year two, which would make it relatively easy to say, well, it just brings it forward a wee bit. So but particularly the targeted rate model on exactly who is paying for which parts of the service is an area where we've got to do a little bit more work for January.
Thank you. Do the, Erin's moving.
I just have one more question, and that is in relation to the organic waste. With the feedback that you got through the survey, was the magnitude or the amount of that organic waste such that you feel that a commercial service may be able to fill that role in the CBD? And if so, would you be open to an earlier approach from someone who might be willing to develop that service before the twenty seventeen, eighteen year?
So we looked at organics originally when we did the curbside recycling, we put it out for consultation then, and we got a similar response back. It was forty nine percent for, fifty one against, which was the same that we've had from the CBD. Certainly, again, for your hospitality, your hotel venues where they have a lot of food waste, it's really important to them, a composting facility is a serious investment. And it's something that we would definitely revisit as we're approaching our contract renewals, because you would want to go to length wide with it to make the point.
I think the message that did come across loud and clear though was how many people have not heard of the existing food share arrangement. So hence the fact that was an obvious quick win to just get more publicity around that so that those who have got food that's still in a considerable condition can use that for the benefit of the community. Lots of people were giving the feedback that they were to wear. So that was sort of the quick rollout to get something better.
Okay, move Mike, signal it, sorry, move Erin, signal Mike. Any discussion, you're sorry, do you want to speak to your question?
Yeah, I won't prolong things too much. I think this is a long opportunity for a city there, it's time to actively encourage inner city living and as we've learned from the report, pride in its appearance. And it's heartening to see that our commercial district have such pride in their amenities and are prepared to help us improve them this way. I'd like to thank the work that staff have done for accelerating this part of the Waste Minimization Plan. I didn't realise that it was initially going to be a few years out, and so thank you for taking that on board and thanks for taking such a collaborative and community based approach for coming up with something that is quite novel and something that is hopefully more attuned to the needs of retailers and residents in that area. The word community isn't something that we necessarily use often when it comes to our CBD, but there is very much a community of residents and retailers there. It's heartening to see that there is, it's hard to see encouragement for them to be working together in this space. Any progress is, I mean, it's also good to see a clear timeline for how you see this work evolving, bearing in mind that it is a pilot. Any progress in this area is positive, considering where we're starting from, but knowing where we're going in the medium term is what I find most exciting about this. It's heartening to see food waste minimisation being such a strong part of this and hopefully we can include discussions around that as those contracts roll over in the next two to three, seventeen, eighteen. And when that's up for renewal, it's possible that curbside recycling and organic collection was a little bit too much too soon for the community more broadly. And hopefully now that that has been proven to be such a success here, that we can look at extending those services as we go forward. So thank you for all your work and I look forward to seeing this develop. Cheers.
I just want to add a couple of things. I endorse what council people said, in rolling this out, I would love staff to consider those on the periphery of interventions which are considering in the short term. So, for example, in relation to the fifty who will be getting the extended curbside service, there are a couple who are just on the edges of that, that wouldn't fit within one of the circles and I would say a shame not to offer them the possibility of connecting in with that, especially if it's just to walk around the corner.
We're not saying you can't cross the line.
Yeah, and I.
You can go around the water and you can touch this.
Oh, but that's true, so it's not my issue. But I, yeah, so I, like Erin, I can see that you guys have gone about this and seeking flexibility, so I'm sure that they will attend to interpreting the endorsement of this plan in the broader sense rather than in the specific line sense. In relation to the organic waste issue, which, thank you for adding it into the survey, and thank you for the work that you've done around that, I, in general, in a general sense, endorse the approach. However, I think that, you know, as we develop the Waste Management Minimization Plan, we identify that where possible, if we can encourage community enterprise through the delivery of waste services, then that is going to be a positive. And if we can find community based solutions which are enterprise driven rather than perhaps relying solely on a citywide civic led project, then that would be of benefit to our city. And I would really encourage us to consider and encourage that from our community wherever possible, it may not be commercially viable, and you're in much better position than I to understand the nature of that. But, yeah, I'm aware that they have been, these projects have been tried elsewhere, that Faianguror Reglin did one a couple of years ago, that was pretty successful, I think, by all accounts. So I think there are models that could be encouraged and given that we have the Waste Minimization Fund, Waste BB Fund, maybe it's all prioritised.
Yes, they're common.
Yeah, it would be niche to see someone come forward if they do have ideas around how they could use the density of, just density of demand for organic. for an organic waste collection service in the CBD specifically to ensure that we are delivering more of that from landfill in a shorter space of time and perhaps creating some jobs along with that. So those are the two comments that I would add in addition. But I really, really support this work and I think it's really exciting to see. So everyone.
Very good. No one else wishes to speak? Right up the line. I'll put the vote, all of those, please, their eyes against. Sorry. Thank you. Last item on the table. Just noting that this, Pegg's Andrew is here just to do, just quick heads up to the castle. We'd like to hear what a matter after that, that's after the protest, what he's got. But any items for notification to share, if you take any. Mum, thank you. I'll pull it into an inch. It's been gone right.